Meeting to order. Will the clerk please read the meeting statement?
Yeah, adequate notice of this meeting was provided to the public and the press on September twenty third, twenty twenty-two and October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two, and was posted at the municipal building in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJ SA, semi-colon, four, seven.
Thank you. Will you please stand with me and draw on the pledge to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people who support this movement and its organization.
We have a roll call.
Yes. Vice President Lucchieri here, Councilmember Lynch.
Here.
Councilmember Tadrick. Council President Rizzuto.
Here.
Purpose of this meeting is for a public hearing. DSC TKR LLC requiring municipal, requiring municipal consent. I'll open. Are any representatives here?
I don't see online.
How about online?
Okay, no.
Were they notified?
Oh, yeah, yep. They were notified, they knew, I sent them the Zoom link today. I actually was mailing back and forth. And they confirmed tonight and they asked if they can do the Zoom meeting, you know, do it through Zoom. And I said, the council president prefers you to be in person, but, you know, and I sent them the Zoom link.
Mayor, have you had any contact with them?
No, I have not. I had, I had talked to Marsha and asked her the same question, and she gave me the same answer. So I assumed that we would have somebody here.
The.
Yeah, I don't.
Council President.
Why don't we wait for like fifteen minutes to see if we.
I have to tell you that I, I do have some very strict questions that I need to ask.
I'd love to ask questions too.
And I think that your, having them here was a responsible thing for them to do.
All right, can we have a motion to?
I make a motion, we recess for fifteen, twenty minutes.
Okay, I'll second it.
Secured by Mrs. Lucchieri.
Could have ordered Chinese food.
Why did we?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose motion carry.
Okay, thank you.
May I have a motion to reopen the meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Lucchieri, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Lynch, in the favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is passed. This evening, we have with us a representative from DSC TKR LLC for seeking municipal consent. And I believe the, the young lady is with us, and if you'd like to come up to the podium, give us your name and we can present your, your case.
Good evening, I am Marilyn Davis, the area director for government affairs for Altice USA. We own Optimum, and we are differentiating, my apologies again for the delay. We're excited to, one, be in the market. Altice, as you may, you may know, acquired cable, acquired service electric television. Three, two years, two years ago, and so we are certainly excited to be in the market. I know the transition hasn't been as smooth as we had anticipated. We had some back office issues initially, but things have, have leveled out. But again, we're happy to be in the market and here to continue to serve the community.
Thank you. Is, can you tell us a little bit about your company and what your plans are, essentially what we're looking for?
So as you know, Altice is not a sole provider of, of, of cable services to the community. We don't have a monopoly, any provider to come into the market. But we provide cable services, internet phones, and now we also provide mobile services. So we're bringing that to, to the community where we are present. We're also in the process of upgrading our network. It's currently a hybrid of coax and fiber optic. We're upgrading to a hundred percent fiber optic from the pole to the residence. We are, we're, we're currently doing it in the optimum footprint, but we are moving into the service such a footprint with the upgrade as well. So that will bring economic development to the community because most businesses, when they're looking for facilities to relocate or looking for high-speed internet. So fiber optic is coming to the community.
The timeline for that?
We do have a timeline, I would say is twenty, I think twenty, some, some point in twenty twenty-three. I'm just not sure which quarter it, they will commence the work, but they've already started to do, to do the, the build in the Sussex County area.
So twenty twenty-three at some point is when the fiber optic will come.
And I can confirm that this date, and I can get to the clerk to provide the information, but we've already started doing the build in the Sussex County community. And our, and I'm not sure the timeline for coming to Vernon, in particular, if we are building out.
That's fine.
I, I have some concerns, and the concerns I have are more with the maintenance of the system itself. What we, what we find here in Vernon Township, a lot of times is a, a car accident will happen, some type of, of accident will occur where the telephone pole is disabled. Now, the electric company or the phone company will come out and replace the telephone pole, whoever owns the telephone pole. And they'll move the electric over. They have to wait for the cable company to move it over. We, we are experiencing currently, as we speak, right at this moment, over a year, waiting for the cable company to switch the cable over to the new pole. And there are other lines that stretch for a very long way along five fifteen that actually dropped down very low. And it has our community concerned. Now, as far as the, the line that's dropped down very low, there could be a very good reason for it, and I'm not aware of it. I'm not an engineer, I don't work for a cable company, so it's a question, what, and it is, you know, a concern. But not moving your equipment over to a new pole is, is something that concerns me because it, it, it took the telephone company maybe four hours to put the pole in or the electric company, and it took them an hour to switch over the lines. And I'm sure that it would have been the same amount of time involved for the cable company. These things matter, and, and, and you want your brand to excel. A lot of people love service electric cable TV, and that's what they're going to call it forever because that's what they started with.
Still cable vision on the east.
They, they see Altice all the time, but they, they're going to call it, but can you assure us that we're going to get some real maintenance done? Because companies have come before Vernon Township, and they have said that, oh, we're going to spend a million dollars on the infrastructure or five million dollars on the infrastructure. And that infrastructure that was worked on wasn't within fifteen miles of Vernon Township. Okay, so we, we want some real results here in Vernon Township. Some real effort to make your system as, as pleasing to the eye as well as pleasing to our emotion and, and television shows that we love to watch. So as long as you don't ruin the giant game for me on Sunday, I don't care.
Typically, when there's a down wire, I would get a call from the BA to say there's a down wire under the address, and then I will work with our construction team to get it resolved. But on a day-to-day basis, the utility has contact for construction to whom they would call. Is JCP and L you're referring to or?
No, it was Sussex Rural Electric, and it would be it would be JCP and L in the valley and everywhere else, but up on the mountain, it's predominantly Sussex Rural Electric. And I think that part of Cliffwood Lake is Sussex Rural Electric and part is JCP and L, I'm not sure.
If you can get me the street, I can find out. We engage.
Barry Drive.
And Way Way on the Road.
Is there an address?
Ninety-seven Way Way on the Road.
At ninety-seven.
That's where those wires are on another pole.
Ninety-seven Way Way.
W A.
W A.
Y.
W A Y A N D A.
Okay.
They can't have First Street, Second Street, and Third Street, they have to have Way Way.
So, so I would have construction do a ride out to see.
Okay.
To assess the situation, and then they can resolve it same day or so. But again, usually the BA or someone would just send me emails if there's a down wire or a low hanging wire, and then I'll work with our internal units to get it resolved.
And, and it, I, I guess that my, my concern more is going forward, will there be a better effort to make these things, you know, like I said, pleasing to the eye and not moving, and moving forward, you know, be on top of maintenance issues?
So when we do the fiber to the home install here, what we will do is, how it works is that we will wrap the fiber around the coax cable that's on the, on the pole, so while that will do cleanup.
That's beautiful.
I'll give you the timeline for when that's going to happen.
That would be great, yeah.
Thank you.
That's something we've, we've heard from other, there's other providers that are not yet in Vernon, but they're making their, their way to Sussex County that are saying there's fiber optic, so I don't know what their timeline is, but you might have a little competition there.
When we come in, we meet with the town to just go through, go with the project, because we, we, in addition to do the cabling, the aerial work, we'll also need to bring in equipment, what we call a rope cabinet, which is on the ground. And so we would have to get a permit from the town, usually the building department or electrical department will be engaged. So then we'll work with the town on the location for that particular cabinet, so that it's not, you know, in front of anyone's house or something like that. So when we come in, we will have those conversations, but while we're there, we will, we'll do cleanup to, of the system that's here.
Okay.
Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Anybody else have any questions?
I just have the same concern about more response time than maintenance. I'm just going to be a personal thing that happened to me, you guys have been trying to sell me Optimum for the past two years. And I said, yeah, let's do it, after beating my head against the wall with some of the, the phone conversations. Actually went to the physical location, that was the old Sussex County, the old
Service Electric.
Service Electric building, yeah. And they came to the house, they sent a tech to the house, he set everything up, and then realized there was no wire from the pole to my house. So he uninstalled everything, and two weeks later, another guy came to do the same thing, and then another guy came to do the same thing. And I guess they're independent contractors or some kind of contractor, so they were not too happy. And they were going to send out a construction team, and I've been waiting a year and a half, I haven't seen a construction team.
No way.
That was kind of, but I get every, every couple of weeks or every two weeks, I get a letter, hey, sign up for your service, and it's like, yeah, well, set the pole up, maybe we can do that.
Address, I can find out whether there's service to the pole, we can.
Yeah, twenty, it's easy, twenty-four Drew Mountain Road.
For Drew Mountain.
That's a Sussex zip code.
That's a Sussex zip code, oh, seven, four, six, one. If I can get it fixed here, I'll take it.
What's your name?
Joe Tadrick.
Your number second, make sure they call you.
Nine seven three. Everybody can hear this.
No, you don't want to say that.
I'll write it down, I'll write it down.
Now he wants to hit the Hallmark channel.
Okay, installation, fiber to the home day, and down wires at ninety-seven Way Wind Avenue.
Way Way Yonder, that's a state park that's here, that's, yeah, that's why it's called.
Okay.
A state park in our town, that's called Way Way Yonder State Park. Um, I do have a question, you know, when, when Optimum originally purchased service electric, there was a lot of complaints from local residents, and that was just when kids were doing homeschooling or working from home, and I don't know if anyone else recalls, but the internet was down a lot. And it caused a lot of, and actually, I had a different provider. I switched to service electric cable because it was faster, because I had three kids doing school at home and me working from home. I never experienced an outage, but I know it was a significant issue with a lot of people in our town. So whatever those issues were, I don't know if you know what was causing that in twenty twenty into twenty twenty-one.
Ed all the time, there's a guy named Ed here somewhere.
Ed?
Where he is.
Yes.
Probably Ed Babcock.
Ed Babcock, okay, so now is that resolved, like whatever was causing those problems?
So in the beginning, we had some operational issues when we were switching over from service electric to Optimum. There was, the, the alignment wasn't as smooth as we had anticipated. But in addition to that, because of all of the demand for the broadband consumption, we had to add more capacity to the network, so.
Oh, okay.
But you, you don't really understand the depth to your, that you have the key to the house, right?
Yeah.
So we had to add more capacity.
Okay, and that was, I mean, really, you know, unprecedented, you know, right? One day, everyone's going to school, and the next day, everybody's learning from home, so I, I don't blame you for that, but so that's, that's helpful. And so since then, you've, you've increased capacity in case, you know, more people are working from home, more people do online schooling, so it's.
We do have a system that monitors the usage, so sometimes, let's say, maybe a, a game comes out and all of a sudden data consumption goes up, but it goes back down after a few days. So we'll know like whether it's an event that happened that caused.
Your tracking PlayStation releases or something? I mean, really, okay, yeah, Xbox, so if there's a, a really hot, like Christmas is coming now, so you'll be prepared for Christmas morning at around.
So we'll monitor to see if it's a constant thing that happens for like, you know, a couple of days or for just like a few days. And so we'll make a determination whether we need to add more capacity based on how long the, the incident happened.
And how, so then how quickly can you increase capacity? Your response for that?
Again, depending on supply chain, so if the supply with the material, we can do it and we, we can fix it, like we said, the day, but when we go out to fix it, we can resolve it that day.
That day, okay. So within twenty-four hours.
Or a few days.
A few days, okay, okay. But if you anticipate it, like, you know it's coming, you can prepare for it, is that what you're, okay, that's good to know.
I have a question. You right now are looking to bring in cable?
So we bring in cable, so our, our franchise agreement is for cable.
Right.
We also provide broadband and phone services over, over the, the of the network.
Okay.
So, so now you have the phone services.
Oh, no cellphone, okay.
We, the company offers cellphone, we, we do have a cellphone product, but it's not part of this agreement, we're not bringing that to.
Okay, so what's, what's the phone service brought through the cable?
Over IP, over IP.
Oh, wait.
So our, the home service?
Yeah, the phone.
Home service is over, is over the broadband.
Oh, the broadband, okay.
We don't do, we don't have sales, so that's not, that's not us.
Okay, gotcha.
How dependable is your internet?
When there's no outage?
I, I, believe me, one of the, I think if you correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, even on good days, when sun is shining and there's no wind and the birds are chirping, you know, periodically, we get, geez, something, something's out, you know, this particular provider is not providing service. I, I put on my, I, I looked on the internet and there is no connection, you know, sorry.
So it, it depends, for, I mean, so that there, there are events related to weather, or as, as indicated earlier, there could be an accident that could cause an outage. Just, I'm just thinking out. But typically, unless it's a weather event, things should be fine for the most part, but there are, you, you have equipment that's on twenty-four seven. So routers go out, mowers go bad, a squirrel eats, eats through the, the cable. So those kind of things could cause an outage, sometimes you have things at the tap that happen that eventually goes back, because again, these are, these are products that run twenty-four seven, like a car running twenty-four seven, right? But on average, we, we predict a two percent outage, and we try to stay around two percent.
And people doing speed tests would find no problem with what they're, what they've been told to, they expect to receive?
They should be getting, if they're paying for a gig, it may be like nine hundred sixty megabytes, but in that, in that vicinity. And again, things do change a little bit during peak hours, but for the most part, they should be in that ballpark. It's a good question.
Well, I know, my current supplier, I, I don't think I get what I pay for, especially since when I put on the, the computer and it says, sorry, no internet. Then I have to wait for internet. So obviously, it's kind of like putting on the switch, and then get no electricity, so no light. So somebody's got to go in there and get the mice running, you know.
And we're able to look remotely at your network, so I can see whether or not you have, you know, five devices or thirty devices or fifty devices, and if the device is within range of the, of the, of the wifi signal. And if it's not, we can say, okay, we may need some takeout to move the, the modem to a central location so that it spreads throughout the home. So there, there's, when it comes to broadband and wifi, there's so many factors that can have a, have a, that could affect service delivery, but again, for the most part, we're able to look at it remotely and we can kind of assess the situation, and sometimes when it's in a takeout.
Anybody else have any questions?
I, I just, I'd just like to say to council that, I happen to know Ms. Davis, in fact, I used to work for her directly, she was, she was Assistant Labor Commissioner, and I was Assistant Director in the Department of Labor for four years. And when she started off with this company, I was very pleased because of the relationship. I can tell you this, whenever I've called her, the kind of response that you would get it now, I get from her. Not excuses, but she, she gives me those kind of responses. Now, if I had known about your situation with the wire, and I'm not inviting everybody in Vernon to call. But when I, the business administrator, know about certain issues, I don't have to go through a long line of people, I pick up the phone and I call her, and she responds. So from that standpoint, I didn't want to say that beforehand, you know, it's her show, let her explain, but I, I, I can tell you that she's been just as responsive. And the thing that I really appreciated about it is that she seemed pretty knowledgeable about it. Oh, let me go send you to a technician, let me do this, and she explains things in a way that I can understand. So I, I just feel I need to say that, and I'd like to thank you for this, I'm not, I'm not a user of any of their products. You know, because where I am, what I do, but, but I have, but, but when I, when we have gotten calls and I've called her, she's been responsive.
This guy Ed calls, I don't know who Ed is, but.
Which I'm good, I'm glad, you know, she taught Ed so much, she kind of bypasses me, and that's kind of good, and let Ed do his, all those phone calls are going to go to Ed now.
Typically what happens, and we, we advise people to go through this regular channel, call CARE or chat with CARE. And if for some reason that process doesn't work, then Ed would contact me, and then we have another unit called Corporate Executive Customer Relations, I can take the credit, they do all the work. I get the information, I have to go to them, and they make sure that it gets resolved, and they keep me apprised, and I keep you apprised of the outcome of that issue.
Couple of other questions. Do you plan on going into the whole town?
So we're not built out here?
Well, got ninety square miles, you have a pretty.
I mean, this town, ninety, seventy.
Not ninety-seven?
Seventy square miles. Yeah.
Seven zero.
Seven zero.
Wow.
Yeah, it's a big township, you got two mountains, a valley.
Wow, okay.
So I mean, you know, it's, it's, if you're coming in, are you going to be just looking at certain areas? And or are you going to be laying in equipment to the whole township?
That's, so I'm.
Which is a major commitment.
Actually, starting to, because I, I had no idea that there was seven, I've been before, that this town is seventy square miles. So typically, wherever we have facilities, we, in most communities, this is, so this, I got to find out. Most communities, we're built out, we, we have, we cover the entire town. So I don't know about seventy square miles, but I will have to find out if we're completely built out here. But what we're doing as far as the upgrade is that we're upgrading our current network. So for instance, let's say Hope Township, so the, the entire town is not built out, right? But we have an agreement in place to expand or to extend service in, in, in Hope to twenty-five households per linear mile. So we're extending service, so that, that town is not built out, will not, probably will never get built out because of the, of the costs, right? But we're, we're certainly working with the governor's office and our federal representatives, see if we can get more funding to build out some of the areas. But we, we're, we've committed to building out to twenty-five households per mile in, in the area. About to find out where you stand in that process.
I wonder, you know.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think the service electric is available anywhere, right, or no?
I really don't know, I.
Well, now, I know Norton, Hope, Sanderson had an area that's not built out.
We're the largest county, township in Sussex County.
I'm learning this, so now I got to go back and find out.
The other question I have is I know internet companies, companies, you know, technology companies try and save money by avoiding the placement of live people in positions of contact, they try and do everything, chat, internet, that type of thing. I was on the phone earlier today for almost an hour trying to get question, a couple of questions answered on an internet situation because of, you know, working towards change in service, simply, but it was, it was a seasonal downgrade. And after a while, going through the main menu, the secondary menu, and then going back and state what you want, I think people get very, very frustrated, you know, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm, maybe I'm old school, but when you call up someplace and, and you have to go through seventeen prompts, maybe that's a little bit more, but like eight prompts in order to get to the final destination. I think by the time you get to eight, people are getting a little bit upset, you know. I still believe in the old somebody manning the telephone, at least I know that if there's an emergency, somebody's going to answer that emergency. And I don't have to worry while the fire is continuing to burn. So my, my question is do you have a, an interactive system within your, your, your contacts that, that enable a people, that enable people, especially people who are not computer literate? My late wife, you know, she couldn't do anything on a computer unless I was there with her. And when she tried to do it, the hands were shaking because she felt she was going to break something on the computer. So, you know, yet she was able to use it, just not work with any problem with it. And, and, you know, and it's much easier to talk to people who are first, they're, they're, they're able to communicate without difficulty. And secondly, that they, you know, are able to be reached without a great deal of difficulty.
I'll say this, our, we've had some challenges with our care, especially during the height of COVID. Our business model is offshore and offshore. When COVID hit, everyone had got impacted by COVID, right? So, you know, where there was a facility in another country, they also had COVID, so they had to shut down, and every country was different, so there was that challenge. We have, we have brought in new management to oversee care, to look at different, different opportunities to make care better. So we have, for instance, upgraded our IVR system so that you're not going through twenty prompts to get to a person. But we are certainly moving in a direction of, of, of moving customers to the online environment. But customers can still call the care number and get to a, a live agent. We have this commitment through the, the FCC, where we must answer calls within like thirty seconds, once a person, you know, goes through the IV.
Really?
Thirty seconds, it's, it's.
And I can wait for half an hour.
Well, it's a measure that we all have to adhere to, unless there's an event that causes us to like a storm or something that we're feeling flooded. But typically, the, again, our business model, even if, if there's a storm here in New Jersey, we can move calls, we can get user call center in Texas or someplace else offshore to, to deal with the ramp up and, and call. That said, again, we're kind of, the, the, we, we still have resources where we can ramp up when we need to and ramp down when we need to, and certainly move customers into the online environment. So I know this probably is not the answer you were looking for, but most people who are, they're on Twitter, they're still on Twitter. I know this probably is not the answer you're looking for, but most people who are, they're on Twitter, they're still on Twitter, um, they can Twitter us, they can, um, sort of chat with us and use social media to say, hey, I'm having an issue.
I don't think people, see, that's the point. I don't want to have to use social media to contact somebody. I want to call them up and have somebody say, my name is Robert, you know, and can, how can I help you? And I don't get that unless I wait and wait and wait. And many times, you know, Robert doesn't understand what I'm saying.
But most cases, you can leave your number and they'll call you back so that you don't have to wait for thirty minutes.
I've done that. Probably the next day I get the call. Oh, yeah. I mean, it, it, it's designed to do what you want to do. But it functions somewhat differently. And I know it's not you. I'm just saying, I think, you know, I think people want me and other council people to act on their behalf and ask, you know, what's happening? I know, for example, I, we asked about cell phone. The reason why is because we have areas of this town, major throughways, Route five seventeen, where you could have the call dropped seven times.
Terrible.
Down five fifteen.
Every road, every road in Vernon, Canastia, Breakneck, five sixty-five, five seventeen, five fifteen.
Yeah.
But.
Ninety-four.
AT&T and I think Verizon, they're putting cell towers up.
I've heard, but again.
Verizon had a really good coverage here and now they don't.
They don't.
They lost some hours. I think they lost some leases.
I think what they were doing is trying to save money.
Yeah. Cause it's, it's changed significantly for Verizon. But that's another issue. We don't want.
Yeah, right.
We live in the mountains and we would like to watch television when it snows out. That's, that's what we want to do here.
Should have television too. So if you have any issues, give me a call.
I have a quick question, one more, uh, question. So do you, do you provide like, um, like a yearly uh, report as far as issues to us? Or is that something you publish?
So upon request, I can provide you with complaint data. So you'll know how many calls we receive that was service oriented or how many calls we receive that.
Any outages or do you do that?
I didn't, yeah.
For yearly outage report or something?
Sure, we can pull something together. I, I haven't, this is the first time in five years someone's asked me, you've gotten it good. Um, so I can go take that back and see.
Okay.
Outage reports, but we typically provide them as they occur.
I think, yeah. I was just like, curious, you know, like years, you know, if you look at it five years over time, are you improving? Are there issues?
Two years though, console.
I know, I know. You know, just to, just to kind of compare. I was just curious if that was something you did regularly, but adds.
Complaint data, we're supposed to keep a three-year, three-years record of that. Again, upon request, we can provide it to you. Um, outage data, we usually, when there's an outage, we report that to the board of utilities.
Okay.
So they may have it compiled, but I, I can take that back and find out if we can provide some, uh, outage.
I'm just curious.
They had outage, I'm aware of here. So, um, but typically we'll, we'll let the, the BA or the clerk know that there's an outage and just so that they can manage and inform the community that we're working on it.
Okay.
But we've created another system where if you get, if, if you sign up for the, the text messages, we know the outage will, but you know that.
But you know when it's back. Okay, great. Thank you.
Once you receive this, you know, your, your.
Agreement.
Agreement. Can we expect to see you up here again?
I mean, anytime.
Oh, really? Okay, okay. Good enough. I mean.
Wow, that was easy.
I, I think, I think people.
Backed up all the way down the road. Like, it's like, I'm probably saying, who is this person? She's out here.
Tell me about it, if, you know.
Did you have New York plates on your car?
Jersey plates.
Oh, you're safe then.
Smart card. On the mountain.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'll work through the clerk to, to provide you with it.
Yep, she can do that. That'd be great. Thank you. Thanks.
Mayor, I have a motion to, uh, open this meeting to the public.
I make the motion, we open the meeting to public comment.
This motion is made by Mr. Lynch. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Bucieri. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Ms. Davis, would you mind fielding some questions from members of the public that are here? Please.
Doreen.
Certainly.
Up to the podium.
Yes.
But I want to speak.
She'll answer.
She'll answer.
Okay. Good evening, Doreen Edwards, Highland Lakes. Okay, um, very happy to see the representative here tonight. Um, first of all, I'd like to ask, what is the name on your paycheck? Is it Optimum? Is it all T's?
Uh, that's.
Well, seriously, it's is, is weird to me.
I'm kind of.
Direct the pot if you never.
I, I just wanted to know who is really the parent company. I mean, because actually I tried looking it up and I had difficulty and it didn't direct me to Optimum.
The parent company is Altis USA.
Okay. So my question is, um, I, I live in Highland Lakes, I live on the mountain. I'm, I'm one of those who had Service Electric Cable, was very happy with them. Um, when we were forced sort of to, to, to get Optimum now, um, I noticed during this whole summer, after COVID, it died down. Um, and supposedly when more people went back to work, that every afternoon on the weekends, when we would try to be streaming some music or whatever, um, there'd be a big fight between my husband and myself because he'd be complaining, I can't get it, blah, 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 blah. And I'm sending, call the company, call the company. And we never really did get a good answer as to why that's happening. So I'm wondering if there's certain peak times that you could look at and say, well, wait, wait a minute, we have to increase something there. Or maybe be a little bit more proactive than reactive. Um, seeing like, uh, what the population is, the town, is it decreasing? Is it, is it increasing? Cause if it's increasing, then you would automatically want to increase the service, right?
So I know we've stopped the schedule.
Where there's a wire out, it's an outside issue, right? There's a wire that maybe got cut or something and then when traffic goes over, you know, the connection's bad. I'm not sure. We will have to ask by the.
Yeah, I'm on a dead end and, um, you know, I don't get any traffic, you know?
Give me your information and I'll have my.
Please, because I, I just, you know, I'm tired of arguing with my husband about this and, and I know there's other companies come, you know, another company want to come in and, um, I, I'd rather the company that we're dealing with now be more proactive and, and, and try to.
We'll find out and then I will communicate, we'll take care of you. I'll update the clerk so she knows what transpired and how we resolved the issue.
Thank you very much.
Any other question?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone from the sky box?
Um, I do not have any hands up.
I'll make the motion that we close public comments.
Motion is made to close public comments.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tadrick. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, at this point, uh, you're preparing the resolutions, agreement?
Uh, yes, the, uh, the public hearing, since the public hearing has now been completed, we will prepare the agreements for the, uh, franchise.
And that'll be done just by a regular vote?
Yeah, I think, believe it's an ordinance. I'll, I'll check to see which agenda we'll be on.
Okay, thank you very much. Comment, we have that. Council comments, anybody?
I have no comments.
Comment? I have none. Uh, they have, Mayor, do you have anything to say?
No, I don't. Thank you.
They have a motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Bucieri. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
At that time.